And I see one, two, three, four, five, six committee members. So, and we're well within the timeframe here, so are we? I think we're all ready to begin. So I'll call this meeting of the regular April meeting of the Policy Standing Committee of the CCSD as called to order. And all members are present. And I see that we have a certain number of people in the public attending as well. So pleased to see you all and thank you all for joining us. Join, thank you for joining today. It's nice to see all of your faces. So beginning of that, I see that we have a quorum. And we'll commence, we'll start with the chairman's report. So I want to, of course, welcome everybody here. And also just mention a few ground rules for any folks who might be attending for the first time. You have the option, this is to the public. You guys, it's easy. If you want to speak, you simply raise your hand. Or if your microphone is on and we're being super informal, you can just start talking and we'll see what happens. Are you all able to hear me? Can you hear me all?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because my thing isn't turning green. Ah, here it, now it shows that I'm speaking. So, but for everyone else who's listening in or watching us today, we can take public comment in two ways. You can, if you're on with a computer, we can have, you can have audio public comment. And should you choose to be visible, if you can make yourself visible by joining the meeting with video and making your video on, and then you would be visible to us when you speak. I don't believe you will be visible to the rest of the world, but that's something that still remains a question. So we will accept comment that way. And we will also, of course, accept comment via email sent to Haley. And I think somewhere in the meeting invitation, there is the email address for that. So we look forward to hearing from anybody out there. We really invite commentary. As, of course, we all know, and it kind of goes without saying that in these public meetings, it's very important that we all observe good decorum and treat each other respectfully and try to avoid personal attacks, that kind of thing. So having said that, thank you, everybody, for coming and using some of your valuable time. Personally, I rather enjoy these meetings. So it's nice since I don't have much else to do. So having said that, let me give you a few. The main subject I want to talk to you about briefly, we'll try to keep this brief, is I'll get you a little feedback from the Board of Directors meeting that we had last, last week, I think. So if you haven't had a chance to listen to that section of the meeting, or I'm going to commence sharing a piece of my screen with you to show you the report which I presented to them. So let's see what happens when I do this. Okay, wait a minute. Well, wait, wait, I don't have it up yet. Timeout. Timeout, hold on a second. I'm gonna wait a minute. Okay, here, we're gonna try it again now. Where'd it go? There it is. Okay, can you all see this?
Yeah, real close.
I can make it bigger if I need to.
Okay.
Are we good?
You can, I can just get close.
Oh, okay. Well, let me zoom in a bit here if I can. If I can make it bigger. Ha, alright. So this was the report that I gave to the, to the board. And it's really, it's coming off that big, huge spreadsheet that I showed you at our last meeting, which I'm still keeping, using to keep track of. And of course, it's getting longer and longer. So anyway, you can see in the first page, this is what we did. And I just wanted the board to be aware of this. And also you, you can see that we've been meeting for less than a year. And it's a huge amount of stuff that's actually been done, believe it or not. But we also have a lot on our plate. So moving forward, whoops, okay. Here's page two over here. And this is what we're doing today. Let me see if I lied to anybody. Ah, yes. I oh seven there, didn't get on today's agenda. So I'm going to just make mention of it. And it'll be in your packet for next meeting. And that's really more of a bookkeeping thing. When we voted to change the wording, this was the case of having contiguous street frontage. Turned out that there's more than one spot in the code where that needs to be changed. And so to keep all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, I felt that that needs to come back for you to bless it one more time before we send it to the board. So you will, we can't vote on it today because it didn't make it to the agenda. So you will see that on your next thing. And it'll be probably, it'll be part of the consent agenda. Let's see, what else? Everything else on there is on today's agenda. So we'll, we'll come back to that. And then if you go over here on page three or four, you will see projects being worked on. And so you see that our plate is quite full. There's a lot of stuff happening here. Don't really have much to say about that. I'll give you just a minute to glance at it and make sure it comports with your memory. But basically, it's, it's really an extract off that spreadsheet and just made a little more legible. Whoops, sorry, didn't mean to move it too fast. Can I, can I go forward or do I need to go back?
Go forward.
Go forward, okay. And today, this is really more to the point. These are the things that were on our plate, which we have not yet addressed. And as you see, you'll recognize some that we talked about early on and where we prioritized. But there's also stuff starting to move on to here, which we haven't really even pretty much discussed. In particular, I'm pointing you to I-10, the second one down. So that's, that is, that is rising to the surface now. So this is just showing what's on our plate. So having said that, I'm gonna stop the share. So I'm gonna see all of you here. Here we are again. And I want to just very briefly make a few points that came out at the board meeting. Because this will kind of drive a little bit of our later on discussion. The board meeting, when I asked for, after I presented this, I asked for feedback from the board. And three members gave me information, which, and since it's only five of us, Harry was pretty much pleased as it was and didn't have a lot to say. The other three, however, each of them had comments. In the case of Dave, he felt that email retention, I mean, I asked him, what are the most important things that you guys want us to be working on right now? From his point of view, he felt email retention was very important, as was a policy regarding the unsheltered homeless folks and encampments. And then note this last one, to fill the Board of Directors vacancy. So that's one director is, that's, that's really high on his mind. So moving on to Amanda, again, she was also very interested in hearing us some, something about filling the Board of Directors vacancy. So now you've got two out of five that are very concerned about that. The other thing that Amanda would like is for us to inventory existing policies to find out, you know, what the popular, what those are, where they are. And then she also, she and Harry were working on the new bylaws for the board. And part of that process, she brought forth this issue that back in 20, going between 2013 and 2014, the board went into the bylaws and really cut them way back because the bylaws were, had a lot of material that was procedural and really didn't belong in the bylaws. It belonged either as policy or, or procedure. So, so in the process of cleaning up the bylaws, some things got taken out that, that particular, those particular boards back from 2013 and 2014 did not, however, take the time to readdress the items that were removed and to include important ones in a new policy manual. So Amanda made a little, which I won't burden you with now, a little survey of the items in the 2013 bylaws comparing to the 2019 bylaws and came up with a bunch of things that she felt probably should be addressed. So she wants us to kind of look at those. And there are some in particular that we're going to in appropriate time. But there are some things there that need to be looked at. So that's, that's high on her list. And then in, I think those are the three things, three things. Filling the BO, the board vacancy, inventorying existing policies, find out what we have, and then converting some of the sections of the 2013, converting and updating these sections and, and adding them to a policy manual. And the other thing she said, which is germane to our whole issue of mission statement and what we're doing, now this is only one director and it hasn't been voted on. But it's, I think it's probably gonna come out. And I may in fact bring it up myself. So she offers some sample language here, which I will read to you. It's actually in the agenda packet for the last board meeting, seven C. But she says here, it is the intent, this is a sample language that she would suggest that the board pass. It is in the intent of the Board of Directors of the Camaria Community Services District to maintain a board policies and procedures handbook. Contained therein shall be a comprehensive listing of the board's current policies, being the rules and regulations enacted by the board from time to time. The handbook of policies, there's more. The handbook of policies will serve as a resource for directors and staff and members of the public in determining the manner in which matters of district business are to be conducted. If any policy or a portion of a policy contained within the handbook of policies is in conflict with rules, regulations, or legislation having authority over CCSD, said rules, regulations, or legislations shall prevail. So I think what that suggests to is, again, this is something that we have actually, this has been coming back to us in a number of times. I think John Nixon and, and Gordon will probably remember from the early days, while Amanda was chairing the committee, that in fact, that was the direction in which she was steering folks. And that was in fact, what, so this gives us a little better sense. I think I'm going to probably ask that this come before the board to give us perhaps a little better, to, to put in writing some of the, a real request as to what we're actually doing here. So, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as we go forward. It does, it is germane to some of the agenda items that'll follow. I think that's everything I wanted to tell you about. Oh, the last thing though, and Cindy, interestingly, didn't have anything specific, but she felt that a mission statement really would be very helpful to us to address that and try to come up with a good one. And so those are the kind of the directions that we have. And the takeaway I take from it is that clearly, filling the Board of Directors vacancy is clearly very high on everybody's mind and, and does need to be addressed. We do not want to have another resignation without having the board make some decisions well in advance as to how they're gonna handle that. So we do not want to have what happened last time. Both it was hard on the board and especially hard on the applicants, in my opinion. So that's, in my, and so I, I do have that as an agenda item today to, which we'll get to later, to try to get a subcommittee going on that. And I think, in fact, we'll go, I've talked enough, I think. Having said that, I think we're ready to move forward. Do anyone have any questions just regarding or comments? Don't want to get too deep into the discussion here, but if you feel either something's not clear, yeah, Claudia first.
In regards to the mission statement and the policy on filling Board of Directors seats, there already is a document. It's in our packet, on our agenda packet. There already are some comments about that already. So they're asking us to, to change that or update it or embellish it? Or did we get more clear direction on that?
That's very good. I think it is an agenda item, isn't it, later on? Hold on a minute. I don't want to jump too far ahead. It is. The short answer is that, and then we'll get back in, in greater detail. The short answer is there is nothing. The board has nothing other than what the county and state law says. There is nothing in the current, now in the old 2013 bylaws, there was something. That was removed. So again, that's part of it. And I'll, I can actually tell you what that was when we get down to that agenda item. But I decided I wasn't going to include it in the agenda packet at this time because what we really want to do is get a group working on it. It's, it's going to be very difficult. And I, there are so many different ways to go on that. So what I want to do today later on is have a general discussion and then get some folks working on, on that so we can move forward. So Claudia, that, I kind of dodged your question. Did I clean through you, sorta?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at, it's the, the camera, it must be the standing committee bylaws that it's, it's addressed in that. Those things are addressed in that, or at least the, yeah, anyway. We'll get to it later.
Okay, good. Ted?
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I have clarification here because what, we began our odyssey with the business of going through the entire director handbook. And we began that process and started moving forward at relatively good speed. I'm assuming that what we have agreed on and put together is somehow archived in the new revised handbook. And then what I'm seeing is all these other items coming up as the problems seem to be arising topically, which, which is fine. I, I guess, when you talk about mission, are you talking about mission for the CSD? Or are you talking about mission for our policy committee? Now, if it's mission for the CSD, all well and good that we would be a part of it. But without question, that process, and it's a big process, really, that needs to involve, you know, the full leadership of the CSD. You know, mission, a mission statement is something that requires considerable buy-in and considerable spreading about before one does it. Now, again, I don't know if you're talking about the mission statement for the CSD or if you're talking about the mission statement for the policy committee. So we can clarify, clarify that as, as we need to later on. And let's see, did I have anything else? Oh, yes. When you are, when we are pursuing the business of replacing BOD directors or BODs, first of all, I think we would want to find that 2013 as a base level. And then I don't think it would be unwise for us to take a look at how some of the other CSDs around, you know, do this so that, one, I, that we're not reinventing the wheel. And two, that what we're doing is fairly consistent for CSDs in the county and the state. So I don't, you know, take, take that as, take that as you will. You know, obviously, there's going to be some dicey things to consider there. So that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. To answer just real briefly on the one thing is the mission statement. I'm sorry, it didn't, somehow it didn't occur to me that, no, we're just talking about the committee's mission. We'll let the board figure out what they're doing.
Good idea.
I mean, but I don't know how that would work. So any other questions or observations? Okay, let's move on then. The consent agenda is next. And that is basically the minutes. So do we?
Don, I think you have a public comment.
Public comment, Don.
Well, thank you, thank you, John. Yes. Please, please go ahead with the public comment.
Okay, I have one public comment and it's Tina Dickerson.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Don, thank you so much. My problem is I have been having real issues with, when it says raise your hand, I get no response. So Haley and I were trying to work this out. And it seems that now we've worked it out. So that's, right now, I just wanted to be sure when I do this, that I'll get through for later on. Thank you so much.
Great, Tina. Is there any advice that we need to tell anybody else out there about this? Or maybe Haley needs to weigh in a little bit on that? No? Okay, so is there any other public comment? Haley's checking here.
Sorry, I was talking and I didn't, I, myself. There is no public comment at this time. Tina was having some issues logging in and getting the meeting up without the webinar ID. So I think that anyone that wants to speak on an item can just raise their hand. And I think we got that fixed for her because I was able to finally see her hand raised.
Oh, good, thank you, Haley. In fact, before we go on, I think we need to test to make sure Leslie can, can be heard if she wishes to speak. Leslie, can you raise your hand or do something to, so I know you're out there?
Can she speak?
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes, thank you, Leslie. Good. Does, do you have the ability to raise your hand? Or you're just gonna have to just speak up? What, how are we gonna handle this?
There should be a little hand that you can raise, an icon.
No, there's no hand icon on this iPad.
You have, well, let's see.
There should be a participants.
Participant, yeah.
Yeah, go down to participants, click on participants, and you should see a text box come up. And when that text box comes up, Leslie, you should see your name on it. I see your name on it. And then as you scroll down, you'll see a little microphone.
There's your raise hand, okay.
Okay, and then what you do is you just, you know, if you, if you want to, click on, click on the little microphone that, that opens you up or closes you down.
Right. I found it on more, it's not under participants, it's on more on my iPad.
Okay, yeah.
We can also use the raise, the raise hand button on the participants' screen.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if you go down to the bottom of the, of the text box, on the lower right-hand side, you'll see a little box that says raise hand. And then that signals the leader that you are queued up to comment.
Yeah. One thing I should say is that if you're on an iPad or an iPhone, the interface is a little different. So Gordon and I were working this through. And I was seeing stuff in the bottom of my screen and his was off somewhere else. So that's, but anyway, yeah. Well, thank you, Leslie, and we know you're there. And we know that if you want to talk, you can, yes, good. I see your, your green thing coming up, thank you. Okay, so back to our, any comments, changes to the minutes that we need to?
Yes, on, oh, I wrote it down. It was like D, D something. It should say CZLUO, and D four, little tiny Roman numerals four.
I'm still looking here, A, B, C, what page? I'm looking at the same spot. Oh, here, oh, oh, I got it.
They don't have page, oh, it's page number four.
Got it, okay. And D, ad hoc subcommittee reports down under what, three?
Oh, under, under four.
Oh, Roman numeral four.
Uh huh, it says vice chair Heinrich stated, et cetera. And that next to last line, it says, whatever it says, I crossed it off. But it should be CZLUO.
Ah, oh, I see.
It's just a little typo.
Yeah, okay, so John, did you see where that was?
No, but I've written it down, I'll change it. Under, under D, D four?
D, D, and then it's the, that little Roman numeral four. And it's the, there's a whole list of.
Page, page four.
Documents, yeah. And it's that CCLUO and then NCPACP. It's the second to the last sentence there.
CCLUO.
Yeah, it should be C, yeah.
Okay.
Of course, we all know what that means, right?
Social Zone, Land and Bird.
Maybe it was Camerah Community. Okay.
CZ.
Any other corrections? Are we, are we good? Okay, not seeing any. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Claudia, Claudia Harmon has moved to approve the minutes as read and corrected, second by Ted Key. I, I prefer a roll call vote. So I'll save you the trouble, Haley, I'll just call the roll. So starting at the, so Claudia?
Hi.
Okay, Ted?
Hi.
Okay, Gordon?
Hi.
Good. John?
Hi.
Leslie?
Hi.
Thank you. Vote is unanimous, five zero. Excellent. All right, we're just charging forth here. All right, let's see what's next. Okay, with, I'd like to modify the order of things a little bit, if you guys don't mind. So let me propose first and then we'll go with it as is if you don't agree. But some of these things, I kind of wonder if we're gonna get to and some are not that important anyway. I suggest we actually table to, or postpone indefinitely the miss, the mission statement and let that come back at another time. Because we do have a very full plate. And it might be better for us to have a chance to think about that a little further. So that would be my suggestion, that we simply table A, which we can do. But in terms of order, let me see. Actually, we can take the order as, I guess, yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, I've asked for a motion to table A and then we can move on with three B. So we're on three A now. And I need to ask for public comment on three.
Done.
To your sign, and John? Oh, wait, who's first here?
Hi, John.
Okay, so I, I certainly agree that we can table that now. I don't think that we're prepared for a discussion of that. But when we do come back to it, you know, we, we're not, we were not a self-generated committee here. We're a committee that serves at the pleasure of the board. And, and the purpose of this committee is defined by the board. So I'm, as a committee member, to work on a mission statement and purpose statement and to look at the bylaws again is a, a good task, but not without direction from the board. And I, and, and not individual board members, but the board.
Okay, fair enough. Ted, you had a comment.
John beat me to it.
Oh, well, damn.
Good job, John, thank you.
Yeah, truth be told. And so I think what I would do if we, if we, I think it does behoove us to discuss it, at least in the sense that if there is such a thing out there or can be assembled, actually, what I think we have is multiple board actions that I'll need to gather together. And, and because they're not always even consistent, but from that, we would have to, until the board comes up with something better, we could probably go with that. But, but yeah, so I'll, I just assume, yeah, table this indefinitely, you know, postpone it indefinitely until such time as I can come up with something either directly from the board for you all to consider. And I, it seems to me as reasonable, now, I'm, I'm speaking as a board member now. It seems reasonable to me that the board, while the board could just dictate what the committee should do, you know, because after all, it is a subcommittee or, or a committee of the board. Nevertheless, I, as a board member, whatever mission, of course, the very fact that you're members of this committee maybe makes this moot. But I think that the committee members need, need a mission that they can buy into. Otherwise, what's the point? So, yeah, John.
I certainly agree. But I, I think there, there has to be some back and forth. But the, the starting point is with the board because we are a creation of the board.
Right, so let me rephrase that then. Claudia, you first, it's more important to hear you guys.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the, 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 the standing committee bylaws. And, and it already has a, a statement about who we are and what we are and what we're supposed to do. And that came from the CCSD. So I think they've already given us direction. So I think what we need to do is take that and write a draft mission statement and then present that to the board and then have them mill it around and come back the next month or however long they want to look at it. But I think to just ask them to do that might procrastinate what we could do probably quite easily.
Good point. Before I respond, anyone else wish to comment? I think, oh, yeah, Ted and then John.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that the board established this policy, standing committee, with clearly some goals in mind. As long as we understand what those goals are, there could be additional goals that we might add. There could be then a mission statement that points directly to those goals. It, a mission statement, if, once we understand our goals, the mission statement should be fairly quick and easy to write.
Yeah, John?
I agree with. I, I agree with Claudia, and I agree with Ted. I, I just, I guess my point would be that there's been so much discussion, even recently, by the board about mission, about what we're doing, why we're doing it, that I would ask that the, the document that Claudia cited be the base, but I would appreciate if the board would say, yes, this is still valid, or not. And then we'll come back and we'll, we'll work on a mission statement.
Good, okay, I think, yeah, uh, let me, I think it's a great idea. So what I'll do is this, I think, is what I'm hearing. It does sound, I think, that, yes, the, the impetus does have to come from the board, uh, you know, but I do like the idea of a back and forth. Uh, after all, the board's only five people. There might be things that they forget, or something like, you know, and it, and to, as a board, we don't want yes people. We want people that will, you know, actually critique what we do, you know? And so I think it's perfectly reasonable for the board to, for this committee to respond to a mission statement that the board, or, or that the charge, that was the committee charge. So with your permission, then, I think if we can have a motion to postpone indefinitely, and we'll just lead it at that until something else comes up. Claudia?
Um, I, I would suggest that if we have room in our agenda next month, that we all come with maybe a sentence of a mission statement. Mission statements are very short, as you know, you probably know. And it's, they're, they take a lot of wordsmithing, because every single word is very, very important. So I think that if it's gonna be a while for us to really come up with a really snappy mission statement, I think that we should start with some drafts. And I think we all should, should buy the sentence, you know, or write a proposed mission statement, come to the next meeting, or the next two meetings, whenever you wanna agendas it. But I think it's a, it's a long process. We can say, okay, well, that sounds good. How about that, that, you know? And then we come back the next month, and we say, well, you know, let's use partly what John said, and what Ted said, and Gordon. Okay, and that's, that's me, the way I think. I've written mission statements, so I, you know, maybe you have too, so.
Good, uh, good. So how about this then? A motion to table until our next meeting, and it'll just be an agenda item. Uh, or, or a motion, you can even do this, if you wish. Again, it's up to you guys. If, if, if you get a majority who says, yes, we wanna hear, uh, we want to bring this up at the next meeting, and we'd like to have a, a, a one or two sentence, uh, mission statement from everybody. You could have that as, in the form of a motion. Is that something you would like? I mean, Claudia, you wanna propose that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd like to propose that we each come up with one or two sentences, suggested mission statement.
Okay, so let's put that, may I, I'll put words in your mouth that Claudia moves. Claudia, are you moving this?
I, oh, it's a motion, yeah, they moved it.
Okay.
I'm not sure that needs to be a motion, but we can do that. I mean, if, if we all agree to come back with something.
We can go in consensus, if you want. Let's see if any, well, let's make sure nobody's objecting to that. So am I hearing any objection to the idea of bringing this up at our next meeting, and in, in hopes that each person has at least one sentence, or possibly two, to come, and so that we can at least commence the discussion? Do I have any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, then by consensus, we have agreed that at our next meeting, we, we've tabled this until our next meeting, and that at that time, uh, committee members will come with a, a one or two sentence, uh, mission statement. And in addition, I'm expanding on this. John, you don't need to write this down. Uh, it's all recorded anyway, and I, I usually listen to this, because I don't remember half of what goes on. What I'll do is, I will assemble everything that I can find from the board bylaws and other discussions as well, so that we'll have what we think, we'll have what the board thinks, and we may not actually achieve any action at that point. It may just be a discussion, but, but that could be a very, very useful discussion. It doesn't hurt every once in a while to talk about what we're doing. So I think we're good on that one?
Yeah, Don, if you'll just, uh, be able to kind of cobble together some things for us as far as what you were just saying, goals and bylaw stuff that the board has passed forward to us, so that we have something to just kind of muse over as we compose our sentence, that would be great.
Excellent. Okay, all right, we, we, okay, we got one. Oh, yeah, Claudia?
Do you also wanna create a position statement? Is that getting too far?
Yeah, that's one thing at a time. And soon the world, no, yeah, let's start with that, and then see where, I think, let's just see where it takes us. It may take us to an interesting place, who knows? And it says, it's very likely we're probably gonna be at home next month anyway, and what else are to do? So, hey, I might as well. Uh, so moving right along now to item, uh, oh, is there any public com? Did I already call public comment for mission statement? I don't think I did, did I?
Yes, you did.
Oh, I did, okay. So since I did on that one, we'll move on to the next agenda item. This is, uh, and this is gonna be an easy one. Uh, basically, I'll read it here. Uh, the discussion and consideration of creating an ad hoc subcommittee to research and make recommendations regarding email management and retention policies. Now, uh, I'll present this one. So we've actually addressed this before, and I had actually said that I tried, took it upon myself to say, I'll be a subcommittee of one to start with, to do some initial research. Unfortunately, I have not yet done that research, but I have talked to John Weigold about who I need to talk to. And the research, and the only reason I'm putting myself forward is, uh, it's kind of in my area of technical expertise. Among the six of us, I'm probably the, the only one that's worked a hundred percent in I T. Am I correct of that statement? So I probably have, you know, it's the kind of thing that I used to do. It's a little too much like work, but yeah, it's what I used to do. So what I would do, what I'm offering and what I plan on it, is there are some initial questions that need to be answered, and then we need a, a subcommittee to take those answers and come up with something. So this is what the, the questions are, and it's very quick and easy. There are basically three. One is, where is the email stored? Is it locally on one of our servers? Is it in the cloud, that kind of thing? So where is it? How much does it cost to store it? And what are the issues about retrieving it? We can get answers to those, then it's possible for us then to suggest a policy, a reasonable policy for email retention. Uh, the only thing I can tell you right now is that the, the, the statement that was, that Monique made, for example, that, oh, it's after thirty days it goes. Well, some things don't, you know, they stay forever. So, and when you delete something, it may stay forever. There's all kinds of issues. So what I'd like to do is for, I'd like a subcommittee of at least two, and I, I would act only as a resource to, to answer these technical questions. But I'd like at least two of you, uh, in fact, if I'm a resource, it can only be two of you, because four, it was total of four, we'd have a quorum. So I need two of you to, to work to, once I get that information, which will be sometime next week, that I'd like two people to take that information, and whatever, and then we'll try to find whatever other documents you need. And then you can enter into conversations with John Weigold, and, and, and he can direct you as well. And possibly also, you'll end up talking to Haley. Again, it's kind of up to John where he, but basically what we're doing here is we need to find out what we can do, what are we doing now? And is there anything that we should be doing different? So it actually could be kind of interesting, as in this, so I'd like to, it's, may I have some volunteers? Oh, no, before I, before I go forward, I need to, for Ted, uh, and this should have been in my chairman's report, on the purchasing thing that you and I have been working on, we're not forgetting it. But what is, you and I still need to go forward, but it, we also need to get this, it can kind of, kind of trail a little behind some of these other issues. The, the, uh, the board agreed, those purchasing was very important, but they kind of wanted some of this other stuff to kind of come in ahead of it. So you and I can get together and strategize. I think what we're gonna do is kind of work through the document that we have, modify it as best we can. And then at the point where Pam is free, see, right now, she's.
That's, that's the thing, Don.
Well, we, we need her, but we, next week, she's, she's totally in budget, right, in budget time, you know?
I, I get it, I get it, but, you know, I was just, before the meeting, I was going over this. And what it seems absolutely clear is, we're really kind of stuck in the mud until we assure that, uh, all of the, uh, procedures, uh, meet what's going on right now. There's a, there's a, that's, that's a, of the bulk of what we need to do to finish this document. So we're really, uh, we're really bogged down until we get an opportunity to, um, uh, speak to Pam, and, um, uh, really go over this thing with her, page by page. Um, I, I honestly think that, that, once we do that, that, that will flow pretty, pretty quickly. Um, so I, I'll be, I'll be happy to work on this email thing with you.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say, is, so the, the purchasing, we, we're not forgetting it. Uh, and Pam, right now, is really occupied, so the most we could do at this point is to formulate, you know, what it is that we want her to do, but, uh, I think probably until after the, possibly even after the second board meeting, you know? It's, it's part of this, the, you have the, the, the virus issue, followed by the budget, and, and everything is kind of, kind of piling up. So, yeah, so you're volunteering?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying about Pam. I understand completely. And sure, I'll, I'll help you with this email thing. I mean, I think it's kind of interesting to, uh, to figure out how, how we're gonna archive, uh, all these messages, because it's, it is important, and.
Good.
Pretty days, that's for sure.
Okay, well, okay, so there's Ted. Now, you're not gonna let Ted have all the fun, are you? We need one more.
It's not my field of expertise.
Anybody else? Don't be, don't be shy. Come on, I need somebody. Don't leave it up to, I need more than just me and Ted, because I really wanna.
All right, all right, I'll do, I'll do it.
Thank you, John. Okay, here's what, I wanted to remind you guys, I mean, I would prefer to just be mostly a resource. Uh, as a board member, I have, I have a lot of power. And so I don't wanna, I, I really want you guys to, to, I know what I think, that's not the problem. I need to hear what other people are thinking. So the more that you guys can do, and, and just use me as a resource, I think the better, the more productive and the better work product we're gonna have. I just wanna, you know.
I, I also don't think this is, you know, starting from scratch. There,
No.
Many organizations, public and private, have policies relating to this, so it's.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. And once, in fact, I think, once we know what the costs are.
Right.
Which is what I'm gonna provide you, uh, and the, and the doability. Once we know what those are, then I think it, it may just fall beautifully into place. So I don't anticipate. But anyway, I got you guys down. Thank you so much.
All right.
Yeah, Claudia?
Hit just a little quick question about that. Um, can, can these emails be somehow archived in the cloud? Is that, is that allowed? Or is that too public for?
Oh, I see your question. I don't know. That's, I guess, I think so, because sometimes you don't have any choice, but.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is if it's in the cloud, you can, you don't have to, you don't have to limit how much information you save, and it doesn't cost anything. So I'm, so I, anyway, so I'll be interested to hear what, what the gentleman come up with.
Yeah, because that is, the, the storage is very cheap. It's really more of the issue. And because I was in database management and all, and data design and all that, the one thing that people forget is that data is only useful if you can access it. Otherwise, forget it. So you could, we could have twenty years of emails, but if we can't get to them, we might as well not have any. So, yeah, so it's, uh, but yeah, the cost of storage itself is minimal. But there are other issues, like what do you do if the technology changes, you know, all kinds of. There's some very interesting problems related to that.
And then the other thing is, is who, who determines which is important, you know? I think that was the thing that really concerned me, is that you have one individual who might.
Yeah.
That, that, I think that's the big, the most critical part of, of this, is, is who makes those decisions? And I don't think it should just be one person, but that's just.
No, 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 you, you have a point. I mean, those are, that's all good, and that is in fact, that is in fact where, you know, that is part of the problem, is how do we deal with this? It's because the technology is new. If we were talking written material, that's already been decided. But, but this is new stuff, and, and so it needs new sets of rules, you know? So good, so I, uh, just to reiterate, we have our subcommittee consisting of Ted Key and John Nixon. Uh, and they're going to, you guys are gonna wait for me to do my homework first, so, uh, and I'll, I'll supply you with the appropriate information and the appropriate materials. So I'm gonna make a note to myself, Don, to provide. So you can wait on me on that, guys. Uh, so moving on.
Um, I actually have a public comment, if you're available.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, the public comment's from Tina Dickerson, so let me dial her in.
Cool.
Hello, Don, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, wait a minute, this may be redundant, because I have not, uh, participated in these meetings via Zoom with the policy committee. Where are you with the two-year, um, government code on retention of, I mean, keeping, retention of emails? What have you, I mean, what have you been talking about? What have you decided at this point? Because I, I do have a sentence to read from, um, government code directly related to this. So have you already made that determination?
Uh, okay, Tina, I, I wanna be sure you're finished, and then I can answer your question.
Okay, well, I just wanna know if you've made a determination. If you haven't, I'm gonna read this sentence from the government code.
Why don't you go ahead and read it? We haven't made it, so go ahead and read a sentence, yeah.
So Assemblyman Gloria, um, wrote a bill, Assembly Bill eleven eighty-four. Uh, that, uh, that really defined and made more clear, uh, section one of the government code six two five three point three two. And it was added to government code six two five three point three one. Here it is, and I quote, six two five three point three two, unless a longer retention period is required by statute or regulation, or established by the Secretary of State pursuant to the State Records Management Act, Article seven, commencing with section one two two seven zero of chapter three of part two of division three of title two, a public agency shall, for the purpose of this chapter, retain and preserve for at least two years every public record as defined in subdivision E of section six two five two that is transmitted by electronic email. That's government code.
Thank you.
And that applies to special districts.
Thank you, Tina.
You bet.
We'll, uh, we'll include that as part of the deal, and it could be, I mean, we may wanna decide we wanna retain things longer than two years. Who knows? But we do, but I do wanna just, no, no determination has been made. All we've done at this point is we're simply establishing a, a subcommittee to work on this. And of course, that subcommittee, by the way, remember, you're, you're free to engage other people in the community. You can even meet with them. They're not, since they're not, it's not a Brown Act thing, you know? Yeah, uh, or you could Zoom with them if you want, you know? Uh, if you have friends that you wanna consult with about this, or, or get ideas from, or there's a, and this applies to any of our work. If, if you know someone who is a good resource, there's nothing to group, it's perfectly legal for you to bring them in on it and use them as a resource. It's just that, and they can even attend our meetings, they just can't vote. But they're, that's the only Brown Act thing. It's not a, since they're not committee members, it's not a majority. So you, you're free to say whatever you want, and do whatever you want. But I do encourage you, again, because you may very well have very vocal and knowledgeable, and who knows? This is a very talented community, so I'd hope that other people could be brought in. Yeah, Claudia?
Um, do retention of emails, are they also board member, board member emails?
Good question. Here's where, there's two, there's two problems here. And what, and this subcommittee is only looking at one issue, which is just the retention itself, retention policies. The other question is, there's that whole records retention, not just public email, but other records. So, uh, we're not trying to, that's a far more complicated issue. So all we really wanna know here is just regarding the emails itself, with of course, the understanding that whatever we do, of course, has to correspond, you know, has to comport with statute. But, uh, you're talking way, okay, morning. John, I see John coming in here. John, do you have something to add on this one?
I do.
Oh, John does, that John.
I'm sorry, John, okay.
Sorry, I just wanna let, uh, the committee know that, uh, our district council will be making a, uh, report on this subject, uh, at, I think it's the first, the first or the second, uh, meeting, board meeting in May.
Excellent. So that, that'll be grist for our mill then. We, maybe he'll do all our work for us. We won't have to do anything. Who knows? We'll see. All right, so we, I think we're done with that item. We're good? So, uh, so I'll tell you, I'm referring to John Weigold. I'll, I'll say the general manager. And so John, John just means John Nixon. How's that, John? Okay.
Do you have another public comment?
Oh, another one? Okay, cool.
So Dawn, to follow up on that. I don't understand why subcommittees would be formed to look into any of this without looking by the, by, you know, looking.
Tina, you're, you're breaking up.
I thought I got unmuted or muted by the host. I'm not sure. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good. It just, it broke up for a while.
All right.
Try again.
I, I just would say that it's a waste of time on any subcommittee if they're not going to know what the legal ramifications and the legal codes say first. So to have legal counsel clarify this first before everybody else starts talking about it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You need to find out what is already established, but that you have to conform to. I mean, and that's for the legal counsel to inform you of, not a subcommittee. I don't get it.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, well, we want to be sure that we will be, we want to be sure. In fact, you've already given us the necessary references that we'll need to use to, to look up the appropriate code. So we will definitely be doing that. Thank you, John, just a second. The other thing though is lawyers are only human, and if they were 100% right, we would not need judges. So the fact that lawyers looking at it does not mean that any other intelligent human being could also look at it and possibly come to a reasonably good conclusion. So, so I'm not at all shy about that kind of thing. But of course, we always listen to counsel as well. Yeah, Ted, and then, oh, John Nixon first and then Ted. Sorry, John.
Well, based on John Weigold's comment, I don't think that my opinion would be that the subcommittee would not do anything until we hear what the district council has to say about the topic.
Okay. That's fine. It's not like we're short of stuff to do. But beware, be warned that when it does happen, I'll be contacting you. So I may, I may, I may wish to get you at least give you a chance to, there may be issues that could be considered once I get the initial technical information. So I do want you to have that before we, because that will, that will help to govern how you approach some of these problems. Some, some may be totally moot. But we don't know until we get the question, the, the technical questions answered. So I'll do that for you. And then, and then we'll, as I say, though, I think Tina makes a good point. You certainly have to be paying attention to statute as well. But what we do remember, and we were specifically directed to not look at it in the terms of the general records retention policy, which is, as the lawyer said, extremely complicated. So, so we're just striking at that. Now, I guess the, you could get a situation where you say this particular email qualifies as something that is subject to our general records retention policy. That's kind of a different issue. They, they do come together, but they're a little different. Anyway, I, we can go on and on on this one. Claudia, and then I think we'll move forward.
Are you saying that, that if somebody sent a document and they had a comment in the email about the document, then the comment would be an email and the document would be public, the, the public records that we wouldn't deal with?
I don't know. That's the question. It's, it gets really, it's, it's really kind of a, it's a difficult area. And then the public records retention rules are, are rather extensive and, and it's a little bit tricky. So we don't want to necessarily go there until we get the other questions answered. Yeah, Ted.
Well, unless I'm mistaken, John mentioned that this document prepared by Carmel is going to be prepared early May. So, you know, as soon as we get that document and as soon as you have information regarding costs, I mean, we, and of course, with the information that Tina just gave us, you know, we ought to be able to synthesize something fairly quickly and, and easily. And I'm assuming that Carmel's document will approach those types of things that, that fall into general records rather than specifically email records. So really, yeah, until we, until we get, until we get more information, we're really not going to be able to move forward with this.
Yeah, it would be very, it would be premature. You know, you know, we want to use your time well. And I could, we can find other stuff to do.
Well, we have other stuff to do.
Okay, so let's, so let's leave it right now that we have our subcommittee. And, and we kind of know where we're going and I'll contact, I know what I need to do for you and I'll kind of, and then we'll kind of just see where we go from that. And of course, as I said, we'll see what the lawyer has to say too. So good. Thank you for volunteering.
One other, one last thing. John, do you have a copy of the Zoom master or whatever it takes, I guess, to set up a meeting? Because I don't, you know, you and I, and well, Dawn, I guess you, you could set it up for the three of us, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's not an issue.
Because that's obviously the way we're going to have to discuss this thing is.
Now, here's something though, as well, that, that you guys need to be aware of with the Zoom. See, I have, the district actually pays for my Zoom. It's $15 a month. And what that does is allow us to go on forever. We could, we could be sitting here three days from now and, you know, kind of, but if the free version gives you a 40-minute meeting. So if you, it is nothing to prevent you from just Zooming with your friends or with, with each other. It's just that you would be limited to that 40 minutes. So I, I suggest that you go ahead and get a free account anyway, because if you don't have one, it's actually quite useful. You might want to Zoom with your daughter or something, or, or, you know, I just zoomed with my sister yesterday. That was kind of fun. So there, there are some reasons, you know, why you might want it. But as long as I'm able, you know, I have the hosting capability via the district. So I don't have the webinar capability. But I do have the capability to host a, a meeting with however many participants, participants for however long it takes. And if I need to, and I could actually help any of you guys host meetings as long as we don't have a quorum, which means it could be me and two others. But yeah, so Ted, yeah, but don't, you guys, you should go ahead and try to, you know, go ahead and get the free account if you haven't already done so. It's, 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 it's very useful. Yeah, yeah, Claudia.
And if you go over the 45 minutes, you just dial it in again. So it's a little bit of a nuisance, but you can go longer if you need to.
Oh, good, good. Okay. So let's move on. Where are we now? Let's see. I'm looking at my watch too. So I'm trying to move some of this. Item C, discussion creating, regarding creating, now this is just discussion. Interesting. I don't know how much we really need to do with this. Creating a policy for reimbursement of standing committee member travel expenses. This was originally something that the general manager asked us to deal with. The board has in fact talked about this a little bit. I think we do need to word a policy, you know, because we're the ones that are writing, you know, that's part of our job is to write this stuff. But we can't vote on it today because it's just discussion. And let me tell you what the board said. And then if you have any comments, but otherwise, I think that what it'll do is I'll have to look for, try to, I'll go back to the old board meeting, find out what their wording was and bring it up at the next one of policy committee meeting with that wording and ask for your, if you choose to approve that as a policy or whether you have more to say. But the, the essence of what the board said, and I think it was two meetings ago, was that standing committee, board, let's see. Standing committee members normally would not be reimbursed, you know, reimburse their travel expenses unless they were specifically asked to do something on behalf of like any other, you know, like if a board member, if the board asks me to make a trip to somewhere to investigate something, then the board will pay my expenses. And I, I think, but I'll have to double check. I think the board is all right with that also paying committee members expenses, provided that it is an official, not something that the committee has decided to do, but something the board has asked a committee member to do. So I'll, I'll try to find the wording for that and bring it up for you the next time around. Do I have any comment on that though, before we go forward? Yeah, yeah, John.
Well, I speculate that the board has policy and procedure on reimbursement, as you just suggested, for board members and staff members. And, and it is only for board authorized travel. You can, if there's an existing procedure or policy, just add in subcommittee members, you know. I mean.
That's exactly what, that's pretty much what it is. Yeah. But still, we have to do it. I mean, even though it seems very straightforward and simple, it still has to, we actually have to actually do it, you know, it needs to be said. That, that'll save John Weigold any issues as to when he can approve a thing and when he can't. Claudia, it looked like your hand was up.
Seems to me that, that I remember someone traveling and not really getting permission, this is a board member, you know, traveling and not really getting permission, spending quite a bit of money on a trip that, that some public members didn't think was necessary. So, you know, it's not, it's, I'm wondering if that's kind of part of, maybe John Weigold can tell us about that. But, but I think that, you know, you have to be responsible with how we spend, or they, the CCSD spends my money, you know, my ratepayer money. And so I think that, I don't know if you can incorporate that into a policy, but I think that it must be judicious. I can't talk judicious, yeah.
Judiciously, yeah, okay. Good point. Well, well, I think there is some verbiage in our current, our new bylaws. There was some reference to some of that. So that may be, but right now, we don't want to really get, we don't want to go there. Right now, at least for what we're doing, it's just standing committee members. And then we can see if we want to address that other one. So that one, we'll come back to you and I'll bring it back with, with an actual one. As I said, I think John Nixon had it right. It's, it's probably a matter of just adding another word here, hither and, you know, here and there. Okay, we're, we're doing pretty good.
And I do have another public comment.
Okay.
Let me dial her in. It's Tina Dickerson.
Okay, Tina.
Can you hear me, Dawn?
Sure.
Thank you once again. Seems like I am the only one calling in. So on this item, I, I, I think that we're getting way beyond where we thought we were going to be with standing committees. We financially do not have just millions to be throwing around. If the board is very interested in some item that's on an agenda at coastal or regional board or whatever, I would think that the board member, the CCSD board member should be the one. And it does not have to be assigned out to a standing committee member. The issue too is, and it has not been, it has not been abided by, is that prior to any board member going out of the area for, to attend and hotel expenses, gas, whatever, it has to be approved by the CCSD board a month at least before that member attends. Once the member has attended, there has to be a report given by that member. That has been violated. And so it has to be really clear. It can't just be kind of shoved aside. I think that we need to be not giving as much freedom and maybe just allowing so much to be happening. We're forgetting that we do have a board of directors. They need to be taking on these tasks. And if they feel it's severely important, then let one of them go to one of the meetings. They already have that authority. But they have to do it according to our, our bylaws. Okay? Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tina. Thank you. So moving, can we abandon this item now? Haley, is there any further comment on this item?
I have no further comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So moving right along then, just to reiterate. So where we're leaving this is that I'm going to come back with some kind of verbiage, which I'm hopefully going to locate amongst the, either the board bylaws or in their meeting and bring that back to you. Moving on then to item D. This is discussion and consideration regarding casting an ad hoc committee with creating policy 1040.2 regarding who replies to correspondence addressed to the board of directors. This is not on our high priority list, is it? Hold on a minute. Yeah, how do you guys want to, do you want to go forward with this or would you like to wait? But if you want to go forward, I'm going to need a subcommittee. But it can wait.
We postpone this.
Okay, there's one suggestion. Anybody else?
I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure what it means.
Oh, let me, okay. Well, that's a good one. Yeah, what it means is, this was actually came up, I think was brought up by Amanda. The committee early on passed a policy to the board, that 1040 regarding correspondence to the board. But what that particular little policy didn't deal with was what about correspondence from the board? And, and I think we probably do, as a board, probably do need some guidance on that. For you, let me give you an example. Let's say that well, this is a concrete example. Catherine Ryan Hyde wrote a, a note to, to all of us board members regarding some streetlights, which were interfering with her ability to photograph. She, she photographs deep space, amazing photographs. But she was getting concerned because her view of, you know, that light was getting in her way. Well, the question, it was addressed to all of us. So we all got a copy. But as I always face with this, well, okay, what do I do with this? Do I just sit on it? Do I, is there anybody who's tasked with, with responding? I mean, you'd think the president would, but it's not official. There's no official thing as to who, who needs to, or how correspondence to the board, does it, who answers it? If it's answered, who answers it and how is it answered? So that's, that's what's needed, John. I'm sorry, that's, I'm kind of running on there. But that's the issue. It's just, it's a rather small one. But as I say, it's not something that's, the world's not going to stop if we don't do it today or even next month. So I just, and, and if I don't have a subcommittee, I just soon leave it and, and, and save it for later when we have a little more time or a little less work. Yeah, Claudia, and then.
Who did, who did respond to Catherine?
I think Harry did, as I recall. Yeah. Yeah, because I remember I asked him about it. And then he said, oh, no problem. He had actually gone over to her house and looked. So. But yeah, it's just that when I get one of those and I do, I just don't, we don't want to drop it on the floor, you know, which can happen, you know, if I think he thinks she's doing it and nobody's, nobody's doing it. So there does need to be some responsibility. Yeah, yeah, Ted, I'm sorry.
Well, taken as a guy who brought up an item four years ago and sent multiple letters to the board, received no response ever until I got on this committee and forced 0804100 through the pipeline. I think this is an important point.
Good point.
I'm sure that what happened was I sent letters, I hand-delivered letters. And nobody, nobody responded to me. And that is an issue. I'll tell you, I was not happy.
Yeah, you shouldn't be happy. Yeah, that was terrible. Anybody else? So what do you guys want to do? You want to, you want to postpone this or you want to? I, I need two volunteers anyway, if you want to work on it. Otherwise, I will postpone it because it's just too.
You could postpone it for now, but this is, this is, this is, this actually is an important issue, especially when you're talking about communication to the public.
I think you're right, Ted. It is important. Would you table it, table it till next meeting or?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's reasonable to do. I mean, I think we have to, we have to look overall on our plate. What do we have really going so that we can, so that we can continue to, to reach some of these goalposts and get stuff off of our plate before we, you know, you can only have so much spaghetti on the plate.
Okay. So any other commentary on this one? Claudia.
The only thing I'm thinking is that it might not be that difficult to write. You know, you have, you get correspondence and somebody, you know, the president of the board should be responsible for either answering these emails or letters or giving it to someone else. And that's all you have to say, you know, the president must do this as part of, you know, or do they have, they don't have secretaries on the board. So you'd have to be the president. And if he doesn't do it, then he would, you know, give it to someone else. But, you know, but to not answer, I, I just unconscionable.
Ted.
And, and may I say that I, I think Claudia is definitely on to something here. The, the reality is that, you know, I addressed my letters to the president and then. and then, you know, everybody else was copied. Perhaps a rationale for that might be to assign specific areas to specific people. If somebody was commenting from Park Hill, then the Park Hill person that's on the board would be the point person to respond or the, you know, Lodge Hill person or the, you know, that might be one way of delegating the work. I don't know.
Okay, any other comments on this one? I see some public comment, but anything from you guys? I'm still, except I think Claudia made a good point, but since I don't have two people at this time volunteering to work on it, I do want to table it. So, yeah. I want to seem horribly arbitrary, but yeah, let's, yeah, Claudia.
Before you go further, if Ted is willing, because this is something that is dear to his heart, if Ted is willing to work on this, I think we might be able to form a fairly quick draft of a suggested policy. What do you think, Ted?
What do you think, Ted?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, Claudia, you've got some ideas and, and, you know. Yeah, I don't think this is, I think there is an easy solution. And I think something that I just said would be one equitable way of, of distributing these things. I don't know what Claudia thinks about that. But I mean, we could put together a proposal, Claudia, and run that up the flagpole and see, you know, see how that made sense to the board members.
All right, I'm liking this more and more. So Ted, I gather you're volunteering.
Sure, I work with Claudia on this.
Okay, all right. Anybody else, we don't want to, anybody else want to join? I've got my two anyway. Okay, we're cool. So we have our committee, our subcommittee. I don't think I even need a motion for this because I can actually do it on my own according to our bylaws. So that's very good. So Ted and Claudia will be working on is policy 1040.2. I'll leave it up to you guys to check and see what's available and you may need, you may need stuff from me. So, well, 1040, which is the already passed policy, which we may need to renumber, I forget. But anyway, what got passed already is posted on the website. So if you look there, you'll see it.
Claudia, do you want to be the point person on this one as far as?
I can start a Zoom meeting. Is that what you mean or?
Yeah, I mean, if Don has information, you know, that, yeah. I mean, if, if you can kind of coordinate that with me, you know, I'll make myself available so that we can get, get together and chat about all of this.
We can Skype too, you know.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll work through Claudia on this one because I'm working through you, Ted, on purchasing when we get back to it. So I'll work through Claudia in terms of getting whatever resources you all need in order to make that work. So Claudia, you and I at some point will get on the phone and try to figure out where we are and how you want to go forward.
Okay.
Excellent. I'm, I'm very happy. That really pleases me a lot. We're gonna, we're gonna get stuff done here, I think. Okay. I want to move item F in front of item E unless anyone.
Don, I have to.
Thank you. I saw them there. Yeah.
The first, the first person that would like to speak is Tina Dickerson, if you're ready.
Right, okay, we're ready for her. And then I see Elizabeth after her there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Haley. Thank you, Don. Very quickly on this item, so if somebody's writing to the board, which I have done, and I very seldom get a response, maybe from one person. So if it's an item such as Catherine Ryan Hyde brought up a streetlight issue, infrastructure, this should be coming before the board. So why wouldn't that be an agendized item to come before the actual board? Again, the board has got to start taking more responsibility because keep, think, keep getting shoved off to the standing committees, then subcommittees. And ultimately, where do you have to bring it back to the board? And so I would say, I mean, quit wasting a lot of time. Something like that should just be dealt with and put on the agenda. It doesn't have to be a really big item on the agenda, but it needs to be addressed. I think something like that. How other items, it depends what they are, get addressed and who responds to them. Well, if the general manager's not included on that, I mean, this should be a GM item as well, something like a, a streetlight. That's, you know, I mean, so I, I really, I'm not too pleased about more and more committees when it's all going to come back to the board.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Let's, let's go ahead with public comment and then Ted will get, come back to you. Yeah, so Elizabeth, yeah?
Unmute yourself, Elizabeth.
Yes, and it's not habitual for me, as you know, to unmute myself, but I will do it. I want to point out that for 18 years, I have corresponded with the Board of Directors of CCSD. And I could count easily the number of responses I've gotten to my emails when I address the entire board simultaneously. Therefore, I have decided that if I want to address the Board of Directors of CCSD, it is necessary for me to write to them individually without telling them that I'm sending the same letter to the other four. And then I might actually get what I desire, and that is I would like to know where the directors of CCSD stand on an issue. And I'd like to know that before, before a board meeting. Now, it could be that I should not bother with email. I should simply call them up by phone. Or I should say, let's get together for coffee. But I would like to know, as a member of this community going on two solid decades, how I hold the Board of Directors accountable for acting responsibly in their interactions with members of the community. And I welcome the ad hoc committee working on this. I think it's a very important issue. But I have a sneaking suspicion we will not have a policy on this before the election of the next President of the United States. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Haley, I see one other hand up.
Yes, Harry Farmer would like to speak, so let me dial him in. Harry, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, Haley. I just wanted to make a remark regarding the issue of, of streetlights and Catherine Ryan Hyde and her concerns, her individual concern with regard to her issue. And also the fact that as a result of her bringing this up, we're addressing the idea of street lighting throughout our community as well as making this a dark skies community in some fashion and how the district can relate to that. So I just wanted to let you know that this particular issue has not just been, you know, swept under the rug. We continue to tend to it, but other items that are taking up our time, it's a much more, how could we say it, a much more involved issue than just one particular streetlight. And I have remained in contact, as has Carlos, but especially myself. We've remained in contact with Catherine, who brought this up originally. She knows that we're still being as, as involved with this as we possibly can be. And it will come back to the board when we're able to address it with some sense of completeness, having gotten all the facts together. I hope that helps with regard to this particular issue.
Thank you, Harry. Thank you. Yeah, Ted. Yep, any doing?
Okay, so here's, here's the deal. I think, you know, Elizabeth and, and Tina have brought up important points here. And I think that we, what we're not, what we're talking about is, you're absolutely right. You know, let's use this example or even my example, you know, you know, when I, when I brought up my small change to this ordinance. You know, this stuff, the information should go to the, to the board as a body. And that's absolutely right. The, the, the problem, the issue, whatever it is, needs to be addressed by the board. I think all we're doing is saying with, you know, the board through either an individual board member or the president of the board somehow got this information, let's say about this lighting issue. It go, it, it becomes something that the board discusses. But the information that needs to be transmitted back to that individual, I think what we're, what we, what we're doing here is we're saying that the point person for transmission going back to that individual should be, for example, in, you know, as I suggested earlier, if the individual lives in the Park Hill area, then whatever board member is in charge of responding to park area issues would be the point person to make that communication back to them in a written formal way. Tina is absolutely right. Elizabeth is absolutely right. All these things ultimately end up in the, in the basketball court of the CSD directors. I think all we're talking about here is how do we formalize getting back to the individuals that bring these issues before the board generally.
Okay, thank you, Ted. I see some other hands up. I should advise, see, the, something to remember, you guys. I discovered a way of looking at the attendees, by the way. If you click on that participants, you'll get two choices. One is the participants and the other of the panelists. And then I had another one, which is attendees. You can click back and forth between the two, so you can see who else is lurking out there. I need to warn Cindy and Harry that they are both lurking out there. And so we've got a possible Brown Act violation. Cindy, I'm afraid if you speak, we'll have a Brown Act violation at this point. John, John Weigold.
I, I checked with counsel yesterday and they can speak at, at any of these venues. So there's no Brown Act violation there.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weigold. Okay, so I think we have more comment here and then maybe, all the committee members, have they had their say so far? Okay, then let's take comment from Cindy. Let's start with you and then Harry, I think after you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, committee. Ted, I just wanted to, to make an observation. I understand what you're saying about directors that may represent certain areas of the community. But the only, the only place that that exists is in an NCAC environment where literally there are areas of the community that are sectioned off by zones that are voting zones. And they, they elect the NCAC board. The Board of Directors are supposed to represent the community.
Yes, remember, we don't really want too much back and forth here, but yeah, go ahead, Ted. You're, Ted, you need to unmute. Ted.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're saying and getting at there, Cindy, and that makes, that makes perfect sense. Clearly, what would end up having to happen is that the, the board members would, the, the areas would have to be either distributed amongst the board members as a choi, choice as a part of what the CSD does as a board. And that has nothing to do with responding individually from a board member to the complainant or the issue person. It is nothing more than communicating back board decisions just as a point person, not as an individual board member necessarily. But I do understand what Cindy's saying. The divisions are obvious with the NCAC, not so obvious with CSD board. That would be something that the CSD board would have to be addressed. How do we want to distribute the areas? And, and that, I mean, you know, you guys on the board pick up certain things. Why not pick up this one too, I guess would be my question.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Well, moving, I see no further comment here. Let's move on then. I think this item we're clear about, so Ted and Claudia will be, Claudia, I'll basically, Ted and I will talk about some other stuff, but for, for this one, I'll mainly communicate with you just so then you can drive the bus on this.
Thank you.
Cool. When, oh, now here's where we work. I'd like to move, I'd like to jump to item F first because it's very short. And our last item E is probably going to take the balance of our time. And I want to be sure we allow enough time for that. Item, so if you, again, provided no one objects, I'd like to jump to item F, which is, and then we'll come back to the homeless issue afterwards. So item F is simply, we need to reschedule the May 28th meeting because there is a special board meeting. They need, they needed to meet that day. So if you all, can I hear some suggestions? Yeah, Claudia.
I moved that we change it to the 29th, Friday, the 29th. Time.
Time. Let me pull my calendar up while you're looking there. Hold on a second. So what did you say, Friday?
Friday, the 29th.
Okay. It's open for me. How about the rest of you folks? Are you all good? Good Friday? Well, okay, we might have to talk about time, but so far, Gordon, it looked like you had some doubt. Is Friday okay for you? That was a yes? I'm sorry, you're muted, so I can't hear you.
Unmute. There, I'm muted.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Friday? So now let's talk about time then. I mean, that's your feedback, yeah. We're talking, we need to talk about time. My own preferences is I like 10:00 in the morning is really good for me, but I, I will bow to whatever you guys can agree to. Yeah, Claudia.
I like 10:00 in the morning too, on a Friday, yeah.
10:00 on a Friday?
Not that we do anything.
I like it because I'm still alert, you know, I'm awake and alert and dressed.
Maybe 10:30 would be a compromise.
Oh, there, that's possible.
Okay.
How about the rest of you? Everybody?
10:30 is fine.
10:30. Okay, let's do, I haven't heard from, you guys are good. Leslie, how are you? Is 10:30 on Friday okay?
10:30 is fine.
Excellent. So we, this needs to be in a motion. So would someone like to make a motion on this one? Ah, Claudia.
Yeah, I moved to change our regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, 28th, the 28th, at 2:30 to Friday, the 29th at 10:30 in the morning.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's second it by Leslie. It's been moved and seconded that our next regular meeting on, our May regular meeting be on Friday, the 29th at 10:30. Again, I'll do a roll call vote. Claudia?
Aye.
Okay, and Leslie? Leslie?
Aye.
Was that an aye? She seconded, I'm assuming it's an aye.
Aye.
Oh, good, thank you, Leslie. Okay, I'm just starting to cross my screen here. Gordon?
Aye.
Okay, and John?
Aye.
And Ted?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we're good. Yeah, yeah.
Times. I was wondering if we might entertain the idea of maybe in June, if we still are under sequestration. My ballet classes are at 4:15. Actually, I'm missing my ballet class today, which I wouldn't mention, except that maybe next time, well, not next month because you changed the meeting, but maybe we could make the meeting at 2:00 and then I would have to leave by 4:13. Because my meetings are 4:15, if that would be possible. We can talk about it next month and see.
Yeah, but let's keep that in mind because, you know, those meetings are really, we schedule them. The only thing we have to do is make sure they're far enough in advance that everybody gets noticed. And if, if that's, but it's really for our convenience, so and at this point.
Change up to 2:30 in the morning. That would be, I mean, 10:30 in the morning, that would be something considered too. Not 2:30 in the morning. Only time up that late.
I like, I love morning meetings, but yeah, 2:30 would be way too early.
Let's all think about that for maybe the, the June meeting, if we're still in this situation.
That's excellent. And, and would you please remind me? I mean, I will listen to this and I'll probably know down what needs to be on the agenda. But as we, I'll try to remember to contact everybody before agenda setting time happens. That'd be about two weeks. With what I think we've got. I'm hoping that as we move forward with our work, our agendas can become more focused. You know, and I think we'll become, as we, as we move forward, I think we'll become more productive. So anyway, I'm enjoying myself perhaps a little too much.
Don, I do have another member of the public that would like to speak.
I see Tina here.
Yes, let me dial her in.
Let's see, what are we, what subject? Let's see, what are we, what subject are we on though, before she talks? I mean, where are, what did we just finish talking? Oh.
Time change.
Time change. Okay. If, if it's relevant to that, then otherwise we can wait. So Tina, if your comment is relative, relevant to changing our meeting.
Well, it, it is. It's about your next meeting. So what I would ask, and it may not happen at the next meeting, of course, but for, for some future meeting of the Policy Committee, if you have not already addressed this, and I don't believe you have, could we have a policy for employee job descriptions that are available on the website so that we are aware of the employees that work for the district? What exactly does their, their position involve? I, I really believe we need to have job descriptions for every employee that works for the district. That should be standard policy, actually. And we, I don't believe we have that. So I would ask that the Policy Committee maybe consider that for some future agenda.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you to hold that thought and come back to it because that really belongs, that doesn't belong in this part of our meeting at the.
I know.
Yeah, very end and prior to, prior to adjournment, if you'll bring, I will call for future agenda items.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry, you know, you're good. You're good. Thank you for that, though.
Okay.
Let's see, having, now I need to get to the, you know, so we've got about 25 minutes here, 20 minutes, and I think we can handle this. There are item here, this is our last item before discussing the future agenda items, which is the, let me read the. Okay, this is discussion and consideration of district policy or policies regarding Cambria's, Cambria's homeless population. So what I'm going to ask is Leslie, Leslie will give a presentation because she has so far been a subcommittee of one to, to start the research on this. And I'll ask her to give her presentation first. And then I'd like to hear some, what time we have to do some discussion. However, I think, and I really would if we can get to this, so we might want to move this, try to move this as, once we have, once Leslie's presented her presentation and she, if you have any questions regarding it, I reserve comments regarding it. Just you have questions for clarity or anything like that. Let's get that out of the way. And then what I really, what we really need here, and this is really important, we do need a subcommittee of three of you. And Leslie is willing to continue with this, but I need two more of you guys to work with her. Because what we have now is simply her own research and her own analysis. But from that, we need, what I need is for people to get this together, turn it over, work it around. And hopefully you will have enough disagreements that something really good will come out of that effort. So I'm looking for three of you, or two of you to work with Leslie on this. But before you volunteer, we probably should, we should hear her presentation first. Claudia, did you have a comment before I start?
I, I spent about three hours looking at her document last night and this morning. I wrote some comments. So I've already kind of, kind of started to jump the gun a little bit there.
Good, good. So yeah, let me, before I, let me introduce her and then let her give her presentation. In your packet, you have, there's seven attachments. Six of those are Leslie's proposed draft policy procedure. And then five others are the support, additional documentation. And I can let you know, I'm going to have to hold on a minute here. One of the others, so five of the, so it's her draft and then five other documents. And the documents that she put forth, and the reason I'm going to all this is that John Nixon also sent me a document regarding homeless. And I did include that as part of the agenda attachment. But you all need to understand that's coming from John and that what Leslie's got are the other five. So I just wanted to get clarity as to where all that's coming from. So the ones that Leslie brought for us are the report, the report itself with the draft policies and procedures. Then another one is the understanding encampments, which is really cool. It's a, that's probably one of the better, it's not very long, it's good reading, understanding encampments. Then there's one about the blue bag, which is a litter cleanup effort. And then there is one on sanitation and hygiene guide. So that, those are all from Leslie. And then the other two that are from Leslie are the 2018-19 San Luis Obispo Community Action Plan. And as I recall, that's the really long one, you know. And then the last one is the Santa Clara Valley Water District Homeless Encampment Committee meeting, which is a shorter document. I've gone through all of them. The Slow County one, there's a lot of stuff that's not really germane, which is just directions on how to do it because it's really a state required document. But it's all good reading. However, if you had only, I'm talking to everybody now. If you had only time to read one, I would definitely go with that understanding of encampments. That's by far, it's, it's short, clear, and well researched. So having said that, let's let, let's hear what Leslie has to say. And then I'd like to, very much like two, two more of you folks to join in turning this around, massaging it, doing what needs to be done. And hopefully, and again, this may be, I suspect this is going to take more. I don't expect you to be ready at the next meeting. I think this is going to take longer than that because this is a very, very difficult issue. Yeah.
Somehow I didn't get all those attachments. So I didn't get John's Nixon. So maybe later tonight or tomorrow or something, if you wouldn't mind sending those to me?
Yeah, I can do that. So send Claudia. Anybody else didn't get them and would like them? It's all pretty good reading. Okay. Well, Leslie, please tell us what you have discovered here. Then give us your presentation.
Can you hear me, Don?
Oh, we can hear you well.
Okay. I'm going to read my statement. I wrote up a statement. So the document before you today is a very rough draft. I took two approaches for research. First approach was I reverse engineered the Bandoza Hirsch Abatement Operations Procedure draft from August 2019, teasing out the relevant legal issues. The second approach was I pulled data from the internet. I started with a narrow band but was forced to expand the search across the entire county, country due to the lack of applicable data. After reviewing over 60 peer review and gray citations, five documents stood out. In order of importance, number one, understanding encampments of people experiencing homelessness 2019 by the Department of Housing and Urban Development is by far the most relevant document, extremely well-written and succinct. Number two is the Santa Clara Water District Homeless Ad Hoc Committee Agenda Packet for March 2020. Has an example of an action work plan I am recommending be emulated by the district. Number three is the Blue Bag Partnership Pilot Project, Slow County Detailed Cooperative Agreements, and the Problems of Inter-Agency Partnerships. Number four is the Sanitation and Hygiene Guide for Employees Working with the Homeless Seattle Public Health. I added, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, since homeless populations are considered supertransmitters of the virus. And finally, at a whopping 188 pages, the 2018-19 Community Action Plan Year End Report, Slow County, it details all local programs, not just homeless programs, their adequacy and lists multiple contacts. It is poorly written using antiquated data for reference, but still a viable resource for information. My findings, data showed that small agencies like the district had attempted to go it alone and were not successful in addressing their homeless encampment problems. Due to financial considerations, they were forced to curtail their abatement programs and use quote tacit acceptance, end quote. Tacit acceptance is the lack of enforcement or elective enforcement of anti-camping ordinances as their management policy. This then led to additional lawsuits against these districts for quote duty to the trespasser, end quote, which is failures, i.e. negligence, personal injuries, and damages. Second, up to 30% of illegal encampment populations suffer from extreme mental illness or chronic substance abuse and cannot or will not follow the rules and regulations associated with homeless housing options offered by county-state agencies. These individuals require quote permanent supportive housing, end quote, options. Slow County only has 34 beds, which have all been filled. The overflow has been historically run through the jails, but since the COVID-19 pandemic, homeless populations have been designated quote supertransmitters, end quote, by the CDC. And local jails are loath to infect their permanent population. Thus, chronic repeat offenders are released back into their communities. Across the entire country, grassroots homeless advocacy has now become a financially lucrative cottage industry. Representative councils focus not on housing options but on cash settlements to homeless clients for damages associated with abatement programs. Small districts like ours have been a particular target for this type of litigation due to the fact we are more inclined to settle out of court than go through lengthy and expensive legal proceedings. The number one issue for all cities, counties, and service districts is the problem of quote reencampment, end quote, or repopulation of already cleared and restored illegal camping sites. Abatement has been proven to be an ongoing and constant problem requiring the continued expenditure of finite resources by these entities. The current estimate states that this issue is going to get much worse over time. And then finally, state and funding, federal funding mechanisms like grants require district infrastructure to land on, thus promoting successful outcomes with clear goals and objectives, timelines, and documentation to support continued funding. In the draft, I have suggested that the district pro's commission be tasked with this assignment and create such a platform. In conclusion, what we are discussing here is a policy document specifically suited to the district's unique situation. To date, I have been unable to find a clear example of such a policy document to emulate. Thus, we are tasked with creating from scratch something completely unique. I look forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. That was very, a good report. Any questions? Questions? Okay. Oh, yeah, I heard somebody. Yeah, John?
Don, I just, I, I thought that was excellent, by the way. But the document that I offered was simply a, an interpretation, application of, of state code and, and regulation relating to homelessness. And it was just for that purpose, that whatever we end up with, an obvious point, has to be informed by and follow whatever state statute or regulation applies.
Oh, yes. Definitely. Yes. Well, thank you. Yeah. So that's lots of good resources. I see it as a very tricky problem. Any comments before we, Claudia, you look like I see a comment on your face.
Well, along with her statement, Leslie also has had a kind of a proposed policy. She has some suggestions for policy. Leslie did, asked Leslie if she wants to maybe just list those quickly. That's what I commented on, where her, her, her suggested policy. And mine had to do with kind of reorganizing a little bit and adding some additional items and something probably that if I'm on the committee, Leslie and I can work on together.
That would work. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, Ted.
First of all, Leslie, I thought that was excellent. And it brings up, I think, a sort of a central feature of all this. And that is, the CSD is somewhat limited on what we can do and what we can afford and what we can really approach. And so I'm not exactly sure, you know, how you would construct this other than to say that, you know, meeting this guideline, yes, our CSD can do that. Meeting that guideline, that's just not something we can do. So it's going to be sort of a, what should be done, what we can do, and then the policies associated with what it is that we can do, given the scope of this issue, which clearly is very large.
Yes. Thank you, Ted. Any other comments on this? Okay.
I'd like one more, I'd like one more person to volunteer to help with this.
Yes, yes, please. So I don't see everyone just.
Well, my plate is kind of full.
Yours is full. Gordon, how about you? Are you, how do you feel about that? Or Gordon or John?
Well, I thought she's done a lot of good work on this in preparation so that I would be willing to participate.
Oh, okay. There's our subcommittee. So that'll be Claudia and Gordon. And let's see, Claudia is already a point of contact for the other. So why don't you, how about, let me, how about you, Gordon, being the point of contact between you and me on this one? Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that'll work.
Well, I just need to be sure. I used to be, yeah. I just need to be sure you have the resources you need. So at some point, probably tomorrow, I'll get on the phone and we'll see what, or actually, maybe, maybe if each of, I already know what Claudia wants. So I'm not sure how to proceed on this. I guess I'll talk to Gordon. And Gordon, you and I'll just figure out how to go forward. How's that?
No, that's good. I think we can put something together.
Good. Okay. So that'll.
Don, Don?
Oh, wait, wait, let's see.
It, it's just me, for, as secretary. So it's Leslie, Claudia, and Gordon, right?
I think so. Yeah.
Yes, okay. Just want to make.
Thank you. Okay. So we're, we're doing pretty good. Let's see. I think with that, we've got our subcommittee. I don't think I need, I don't think we need a motion. I think we're good. I can, our bylaws actually allow me to appoint a subcommittee. So if I, in the case like something comes up and, and I don't want to call a meeting, I need somebody to work on it. So that's good. So we've basically got everything through. There was something I meant to get on here, and I think I was going to bring it in my. So this, this item is closed. We're done with it. I don't see any, let's see, make sure we don't, nope. I should call for public comment before we move any forward. Is there any public comment on this item?
I do not have any public comment at this time.
Thank you. So moving forward then, before we deal with, well, this is kind of future agenda items. So I'm going to use that. It's my excuse for bringing this up. I really meant to bring it up in the chairman's report. We're going to need some, again, a subcommittee to work on the procedure for replacing board members. Would actually like to get started on that so that we have some material for our next meeting. We, so I, I think we can, even though it's not an agenda item per se, I can, can we have a subcommittee, which, and then that subcommittee can bring forth something for discussion at our next meeting. Could I ask maybe, John, could you, since you've already done, you've already sent me one thing on the state law?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. So maybe one other person? Who's not working too hard? You're all working really hard. Well, let's.
I'd like to participate there.
Okay, Gordon and John Nixon. Great. I love it. So thank you. So we have our subcommittee of two at the moment, which will be Gordon and John Nixon working. And I'll make sure, again, John, I'll use you as my point of contact.
Yeah.
Make sure that you have the text of the old 213, 2013 procedure that the board used to use. You've already located much of the statutes that, that we need to look at.
Yes.
And then I, I think what we'll do on this one is you guys will look at that. And when we bring it forward, I don't expect that we'll have a total conclusion next time. I think it might be well to, to bring out the issues because I can, I can imagine a number of, of ways of going on this. And this is one where I think the public may need some opportunity to weigh in on because I, all of those who were involved in the last go around on this, no doubt have bad memories about it and may wish to weigh in on that. So you and I'll start the ball. And, and then we'll have something for the next, next, the next committee meeting. Is that all right with you, John?
Sure.
Good. Okay. And I got to remember what I'm doing here. So it'll take me probably a couple of days to get all the ducks in order, folks. And then I, I'll check, because I'll need to go over the recording and double check to make sure I have all of my assignments. Thank you. That was, that's actually was an item of some importance. So any other future? We had Tina's suggestion. Can someone remind me what that was?
I wrote down Tina's suggestion that would like to see, like to have the board in this committee consider a policy that would require job descriptions for all district employees.
Okay. And anybody else have? Okay, and anybody else have, okay, thank you, so we'll, yeah, Claudia.
Change the meeting, consider changing the meeting time to 10:30.
Thank you, okay. Considering, changing the meeting time to 10:30.
COVID is over, and then we might need to change that.
Yeah, we have to kind of go piece by piece. I, I don't have a lot of hope that we're gonna be out of this anytime soon. But also, I, I kind of enjoy these meetings at home. It's kind of, and fortunately, I'm retired and so far my pension is not in danger, although if the state goes belly up, well, then we're in a different situation. But you know, we can't plan for the destruction of civilization. You know, that's, that's a whole different issue. Hopefully that won't happen. Well, I think we're actually gonna end up ahead of time. If anyone has any, any other comments? Anything about how the meeting is going, is anything you'd like to see different? This is the time to say something. Yeah, Claudia?
I really like the Zoom meetings.
I do too.
I look real nice on the top, but the bottom are sweatpants, see? Too much. I like the comfort of it. I like not having to drive. And it's, it's not as engaging as being there live. But you can see everybody's faces, except for, unfortunately, you can't see the public. But you can see everyone's faces. And I think that, you know, as long as we can do that. In fact, we see faces more with this, because we're usually not looking straight at each other. You know, I find myself, oh God, don't do that.
Yeah.
Oh, you have to be careful, but, but I, I do, do like it. So let's talk about that for a future.
Yeah, I, I do too, actually. And you're not the only one who said that. I, somebody else, oh, my partner was watching with me one of these meetings. And he made also the comment, you could actually, at a regular meeting, even a board meeting, you're, the audience is way back there, you can't really see much. So this is, and, and like at our committee meetings, sometimes if, like if, if the light's the wrong way, I can't necessarily. So in a way, even though there, there are some cues that we miss, the way we hold our bodies or other issues, there are other cues that we can pick up instead. So it has this quality to it that I'm, and the other thing is, and I'm really kind, this is why I'm kind of pushing it too. I think this is more public than we have had at any of our meetings. We had a total of four originally. For us, that's doing really good. So again, having these things where people can easily join in from the comfort of their home. So like, so if we've got something that you think people are really interested in, you know, as you happen to talk to them, tell them how much fun it is and how entertaining it can be.
Yeah.
No, because seriously, and that they will have a chance to talk and we will listen, you know?
Yeah, but Haley still won't let me play my Black Sabbath.
No, no, well, there are some limit, you know? I, I, so, very good, Ted. The other thing is for you all, is you experiment with Zoom, the screen sharing, which I did a little bit of, you will want to try that, experiment with it. There are some very interesting features where you can have, you can have the screen sharing going on, but you can still have a speaker and people can do a split screen. There's all kinds of really interesting things that you could do with this.
And you could also put up a document so people can read it at the same time.
Right. And of course, you can have whatever background you choose, you know? That could be kind of interesting.
I think it would be helpful. I mean, I'm, I'm finding myself referring between this and my phone right now, looking at the agenda versus what's going on here. So yeah, maybe we can, yeah, right. Maybe we can work split screen up to put some of the documents up like you did earlier. That was very helpful. I, I think, I think, given the size of the screen, it's gonna be kind of, you know, especially when Leslie's operating on a phone, she's not gonna probably be able to see a document very well on, you know, on this. But that's the only, you know, thing that would be nice. But, you know, we can work around that, having documents.
Don?
Yes, John?
You know, I'm, I'm not at home right now, but I, and my computer is on battery and it's gonna go dead any moment now.
Okay, okay, quick. Well, we better adjourn, but this is fun. So thank you all. I love seeing all your faces and everything. And it, it's nice, it gets kind of lonely over here sometimes, so this is good. So thank you all for coming, you know, and I look forward. And the other thing is, and I'll let you go for sure, considering how easy this is, if you guys think like you need a special meeting, if you actually need a special committing to deal with one of these particularly naughty problems, it's easy to do, very easy. Only requires 24 hours notice, we can all be here. So don't be afraid, just let me know if that's what you want, yeah.
I have a little, little issue that, and it kind of with Ted, last time, when we had our little test meeting, was that Ted was backlit and he was a shadow. And Gordon has been shadowed. We haven't been able to see Gordon's face. He, we, we know it's you, Gordon, but, and whenever you have a light behind you, you're backlit. And so then we lose the opportunity to be able to see your face.
Let's, in, in order so John can see, or he's just taken away from us involuntarily. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. But those of you who wanna hang around for a little bit and talk technical things having to do with this button or, or the lighting, I invite you to stay for a little bit. And then when I know that you're all happy, I'll go ahead and close it down. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Buddy, a second? Somebody's second?
Second.
Ten seconds, okay, motion to adjourn. This will do by voice. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody? I don't hear any opposition. The meeting is closed and thank you all. We actually ended exactly on time.
Wow, 4:30.
You're doing better and better at this. So John, if you need to go, go ahead. If anybody has any technical issues, you hang out for a minute.
Only one.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye, John, thank you.
This is, this is, well, it's for everybody. If you have two devices that have speakers on in the same room, you're gonna get infinite loop. So, you know, that's, that's why, and I don't know, Leslie sounded a, a little like Black Sabbath a moment ago with the infinite loop, and so did Gordon. So it's, it's easy to do, but if you get two mic sources in, in the same room, you're gonna get infinite loop.
Yeah, yeah, that's, the feedback was, is an issue.
Right.
It wasn't too bad, it seemed to work pretty well.
Oh, no, no, it wasn't terrible, but it can be ear piercing.
These wonderful little things, they do work.
Yeah.
And, and that's what you see a lot of the newscasters or other people who are working from home. Well, you saw John Nixon had his on. And that allows you, it, it does two things, it prevents the feedback. And also, if you've got other folks around you, you don't necessarily wanna bug them and stuff. And, or if you got extra noise, the barking dog or the children playing in the back behind you or something, then the attached microphone is a good way to avoid that.
Don, I have the equipment with me right now, can I test it real quick while you're still on?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll stay here as long as anybody wants.
Just let me test on this, Christine's here, hang on. It has a little tiny microphone attached to it, but I've never used it before. I've only used the earbuds, so let's see if this microphone actually works or not. Is that right? There it is, all right. Cool, can you hear now?
Oh, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear?
Okay, I, I can't hear it, so hang on one second. Sorry.
You may need to, down in that corner where you, you have your microphone, you see your microphone. You can.
Right next to that is the microphone, select a microphone.
Okay, so.
Right next to, right next to the mute button, there's a select.
Okay, hang on.
Of course, she's, she's on, she's on an iPad. So Gordon, where is your microphone button? She's on an iPad too. It's, it's not in the same place, that's the problem.
Yeah, I'm trying, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now it should be off. You can't hear me now, correct?
That's cool, see, we can mute you, that's cool.
Now it's off. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's no feedback, so Gordon's on. Gordon, can you open your computer up over there, take off your mute off and see if we get feedback?
Yeah, let's see, hey, I like it there.
It's.
Cool, you got it.
It works.
Not muted.
Not muted, everybody, none of us are muted now, right? Yeah.
No, we're good.
Are you getting, are you getting feedback at all?
No.
Nope.
No, we're good.
Remember that setting, Leslie.
Who's playing, who's playing music, though?
Not me.
I'm picking up a radio.
I don't know, it's this end.
Yeah.
No radio in your house.
Like I say, Haley won't let me play my music.
I know, we can't have Black Sabbath or Nine Inch Nails.
When I open, open my microphone, it, I get the radio station.
Oh, really? Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's just a function of your picking up FM on that wire.
The wire's doing it, yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
You get, you're in the foreground and then radio is on the background.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're attenuating the FM wherever you are.
Maybe if she holds it or changes the position of the wire or something.
All right, but this situation with the earbuds works for you?
Yes. Yeah, I think it works.
Okay.
Okay, and you've got your hand raise button, so you can do that, right?
Leslie, where are you located?
At Christine's, in Gordon's house.
Oh, oh, well, that's why you guys were getting feedback, okay.
Right, right, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we had to, we had to be exiled into another room.
That makes sense. No.
Great, Leslie, I see your hand, that's great.
There you go, okay.
Good. So other than, and, and later, if you wanna get fancy, instead of having your, just your name, you can look at my screen for a minute and see what, I want you to see what happens when I stop video. I'm gonna do it again here. See, now my camera is turned off and I'm allowing people to see my lovely mug instead. Fifteen, twenty years ago. So that's something you can do, like I, I do this because if I need to scratch in some embarrassing way or I need to get up and walk around, I generally, I make a point of wearing pants when I zoom. But nevertheless, well, it's handy sometimes to turn off your video if you need to. And that's, it's nice to have a photo. So you might wanna consider that as a way of, if you don't wanna, you can have a presence without actually people seeing you, and that's kind of handy too.
Okay.
That's good. Now I see Tina seems to still be here, I don't know why. Tina, are you still out there? Apparently she didn't leave the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and, yeah.
Okay, guys.
Okay.
Got it, I'm outta here.
Okay, so.
Hello.
Good, I'll give me a day or two to regroup and then I'll start calling around and we'll see what we can do with this. Good job, everybody. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye-bye.